There we go.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Clerk's office, Monae, you're good?
Stop eating cherries?
Yeah, I'm ready, Sean.
Perfect, then we will go ahead and get started. This is the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Budget Meeting for Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. This meeting is subject to the Open Meetings Act. There's a copy of the Open Meetings Act located at the back of the room 112 and 113 in the county city building. You can also review the Open Meetings Act at aog nebraska.gov/open-meetings. That's aog nebraska.gov/open-meetings, or you can review it in state statute at 84-1401 through 84-1414. The first item up on the agenda is Department Budget Hearings with Dennis Meyer. You want to take it away, Dennis?
Yep, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. And today, we're, we're gonna talk with Jared first about the district court budget, and then we'll, we'll talk to Sue about a couple funds that she deals with. So, so Jared, let's, let's go ahead and get started. And I just want to start off first talking about this current year's budget, because we've only got a few weeks left. And I kind of want to make sure if we, if we do need to clean up anything, we know where we're at. How are you sitting on this current year's budget?
Where's Jared?
He was there when I saw him.
I, I did too.
He's there, he's on mute.
All right.
Jared, you might be on mute.
I was looking at another document and should probably multitask, huh? We actually, we're looking pretty decent. I was just looking at it and I, we're gonna be close. But we will probably only hit about, I think 752,000 on our legal services, and we had budgeted 790. So I think we'll have a $40,000 cushion.
Okay.
A lot of, I don't know how reimbursement is working. We've, at the end of this, we'll probably have spent 17,000 to $18,000 on COVID stuff. I've submitted 15,000 to Sarah for reimbursement.
Okay, just, just keep me in the loop. If anything changes from where you're, where you're feeling at right now.
Okay.
Just so that we don't, we don't miss out on anything, so that we can keep you underneath that budget.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, okay, so let's talk, let's talk current year budget request. And when we, when we look at the numbers here, you will see that his expenses are at just a little over 3.1 million. And it's at about a 7.89% increase. His revenues are at 255, which is at about a 2.2% increase. Now, one of the things that, and I'll let Jared address this too. One of the things that's driving his expenditures is within these budget numbers, there is an additional request for two employees. So that's where you will see the increase has, has jumped to about 8%, but that's kind of driving some of it. So Jared, just talk to us about what's driving your budget request.
So, because it's the perfect time to ask for new employees. We've been holding off as long as we can. You know, we've talked to the board, I think, several times about IT and tech problems and getting things resolved quickly in the middle of trials and those types of things. It's gotten to the point where I can't get my job done as an administrator, because that tends to be what I'm doing. The, so I, so we've talked with the county clerk's office, the, or I'm sorry, the district court's clerk's office, the county court, the juvenile court, about sharing an IT person similar to the way the jail and the health department does. And while it's a little bit more unique, and that's mostly because of the time sensitivity. If we're, for example, in the middle of a trial and something goes down and we can't get even a password reset, you know, we may look at having somebody sit in jail for two more months until they get to the next jury term. So, I mean, you know, so it's kind of a balancing act, and we do the best we can. And you know, that hasn't happened, because I've been able to kind of jump around, but I think it does other places. And I think it's getting to the point where I can't, I just can't keep up. So, that's, that's the first request is, is similar to, I think, Nate Atkins' Atkinson's position at the jail. The second request is that the judges came to me after I had submitted, submitted the budget. But I think I was able to get it to you, Dennis, and that's for a staff attorney. And that's just due to the, they're overworked, they're not able to get the amount of work done that is being kind of put to them by the, by the judges. And this saves, again, this, it saves money on the backend, because getting some of these, you know, orders out and opinions out, it speeds that process up, and most of those people, or a lot of those people are in custody. So, that would, that's that request, as far as for another staff attorney to help speed up the process as we're getting just inundated. With an impending retirement possibly coming as well, we will be down to judge for, you know, typically, it's been a significant amount of time, six, seven months. They sometimes will use retired judges. I do not anticipate them being able to do that with state's budget. So, that's kind of where, that's kind of where we're at there. Judge Nelson is on and was gonna talk a little bit more to that, but I don't think, I don't see her on here, but she says she can raise her hand, so I don't know, Jamie, if maybe you could invite her.
Yeah, I bumped her up to panelist.
Okay, thank you.
I see that I'm on mute, and I, hang on just a second, I can see if I can get my video.
We can hear you.
How about my video too? You want to see me?
We see you, we hear you.
Finally, I was struggling to get that accomplished. You know, it's, it's really hard for Jared to come in here and, and I think tell you how busy he is. And to talk about why we need another person, because he's really having to explain some of the things that are going on with him, and that have been going on with him for a long time. Even before the pandemic, Jared, who of course has, happens, happens to have vast IT knowledge, based on both a degree in that and just enormous training and, and, and a passion for that area, has been spending far more, quite frankly, than half of his time addressing IT needs in the courts. Catch plural, courts, it's not just the district court. Jared is not a turfy, I'll use that word, and that means that he assists the other courts too. Probably more than I know, but also with our blessing, because the courts, this, this is what we need to do. But it includes general computer problems for judges, bailiffs, court reporters, staff attorneys, just our court alone, that's, you know, 30 employees. Courtroom audio and visual difficulties, video conferencing equipment, obviously. And that includes not only that equipment that is used by the courts, but also by the correctional facilities. It also includes keeping up with upgrades to aging equipment, installing hardware and software, and managing what I call the hand-me-down process, which is where we try to get the, the very most use out of every piece of electronic equipment that we possibly have by sort of continuing to use it, kind of down, it's like a bunch of siblings, you know, that, that pair of jeans has maybe one more, one more use after going through three siblings. Well, it's kind of like that in terms of our staff. He also has been, not just during the pandemic, like I said, assisting other courts, the clerk of the district court, and others like the jail through really some tough technology issues. During the pandemic, he has been absolutely key to keeping all of the courts up and running, in whatever form that looks like. And it has looked kind of odd at times, but all of us, and I have had folks from the county court, the juvenile court, and the clerk of the district court, as well as others, reach out to me specifically to say, I don't know if you know exactly how much Jared is doing, but he has saved our bacon any number of times, and he has gone above and beyond. And these are agencies that are really technically not, not his, under his purview. And, you know, good for him, that's what a leader does, is takes care of things and gets things done. But it comes, it comes at a cost to him, and I, and I think that we really need to pay attention to that. You know, when the, when the pandemic was hitting, not when it hit, but when, even in anticipation of the pandemic, Jared, single-handedly took that leadership role and got busy looking at what the needs of the courts were going to be, anticipating those things, and got kind of busy purchasing some things that we absolutely were gonna have. And as a result, we didn't have a downtime like a lot of courts did, and that struggled to figure out what that looked like. So, just amazing things. So, he, he does a lot of those things. And, and the question might be raised, why? Why don't we call IT and have those people do that as opposed to put that burden on Jared? Well, because oftentimes, when we have the kinds of problems that we have with technology, we need a very quick response. Oftentimes, we're in the middle of a trial, we might be in the middle of a witness, we, we might, it might be a jury trial. And we don't have the luxury of stopping and waiting to get into a queue, if you will, through IT, and wait a day or two for somebody to respond to those problems. Those kinds of delays are additional expenses, and we are trying desperately to be really good stewards of the taxpayer funds that you allocate to us in your budget. And those kinds of delays cost in jury time, in court-appointed counsel time, and a myriad of other, maybe not so tangible ways. Delaying trials, keeping people in custody longer, you know, all of that adds up. And it, it may not be those visible dollars in terms of dollar for dollar in terms of minute, but it adds up. You know, because of Jared's skills, we use him. Because we use the many of the actual duties, as he just alluded to, get pushed back to a back burner, they still get done. There's no question about that, but that is because Jared is working many late nights, many hours on the weekends to get those tasks accomplished. I can't tell you how many times Jared and I exchange emails at 10:00 or 11:00 at night, or texts, and on the weekends, about things that he is doing and getting accomplished. That's not sustainable over the long haul, and it's also not fair to Jared. We need a dedicated IT specialist that would be able to handle those IT needs, not only for this court, but for the juvenile court and the county court and the clerk of the district court, much like other agencies have those specialists dedicated to them. This would be no different. We, we are well aware of the budget constraints all of you are under in making these kinds of decisions. We have talked about asking, we, the judges here have talked about asking for this IT position for years, probably going on for, best I can recall, looking back at my notes. So among ourselves, we've been talking about this, recognizing the need for it for at least that much time. And we have put off making this request in an effort to do as much as we possibly can with the resources that we currently have. I think, quite frankly, we all agree, we have now reached a critical mass where we need to move forward with this position in order to keep all of our courts operating at full capacity. And, and, and I want to emphasize, this is not, this is not a knee-jerk reaction to the pandemic. That has certainly added a whole lot, but even without those problems occurring, we were at this point. And of course, now those problems have occurred, they are ongoing, they're not likely to go away anytime soon. And, and here we are, just, just so that you know, even my effort to get on this Zoom call and get my video and audio open, because it was not opening correctly for me, and I'm pretty good at Zoom right now, let me tell you. I was texting Jared while he was already talking to you. That's the kind of ways we try to work through these things. So, so the IT specialist position, and I may have, do I have that, that title right, Jared?
I, no, but I can't remember exactly what it is, Dennis.
Wrong, but anyway, it's, it's in our, it's in our spreadsheet budget request, and I have, I don't have that up in front of me. So, so that's request one. Request two, as Jared said, is to add another staff attorney. As you know, we currently have two staff attorneys for the eight judges and our child support referee. Each, I want you to understand some numbers, each district court judge has an average of 450, actually, it's 458, if you really want to know the average number of cases pending, but we'll round that to 450, pending at any given time. The bulk majority of our cases fall into the categories of felony criminal, civil, domestic relations, appeals from administrative agencies, and appeals from the county court. That's the general gist of what we do, just as a reminder, there are some outliers in there, but that covers the bulk majority of it. Because our court sits at the seat of state government, there are over 30 statutes that give our court special exclusive jurisdiction in cases that our brothers and sisters of the bench in other districts don't have to handle. We, we take care of those cases for them. So, our district court handles more of, of, of unique variety than other districts in Nebraska. We hear cases that contain novel and complicated legal issues requiring enormously time-consuming research and writing. Without staff attorneys assisting with that workload that we have, we would be, quite frankly, unable to get our work done. I'm in my 15th year as a district court judge. In that time, I've seen the workload of this court increase steadily, and we have not added staff. We've reconfigured a couple of things, but we've not added staff. We originally had, for example, in the staff attorney category, when I first started, we had two FTEs that we divided among students who were in their second and third years of law school as our, doing law clerk work, that work. We got to the point where that just was not enough. We then used those two FTEs as lawyer, law clerks, people who have passed the bar. And as you well know, and will remember, we have, we have worked to make those positions what they ought to be, and give them the value that they ought to be in making them staff attorney positions, as opposed to calling them law clerks and, and raising their pay. The two that we have are, oh my gosh, Barna and two of the best lawyers and researchers and writers that I, that I've ever been around. They are excellent. And, but they are also tapped to their gills. Both of them came and saw me, I, I handle sort of our personnel stuff around here, in conjunction with Jared. They came and saw me, I want to say it was in February, and basically were really upset, because they were feeling really terrible about how many jobs they had in, on their list of things to do, and how long it was taking them to get them done, because of the complicated nature of the things that we give them, because we need their help in the research department. We need them working on those things, and, and them getting their research and that product out for eight judges who are all bombarding them with these kinds of really heavy-duty projects was weighing very heavily on them, because they were not meeting the timeframes within which we have to get cases decided. And so they didn't, I mean, they were a little distraught over what to do about that. And of course, the answer is, you, you do what you can. And they are also working, you know, no one here works eight to five, I'll just tell you that, we'll just leave it at that. But we struggle to get our work, our work timely done because of the load. So, I've seen that steady increase. As you're well aware, the legislature continues to add to that workload. I have yet to see a new law pass that reduces it. And a good example of one of the additions that has added significant time is one that I know that you are well aware of, and that is post-release supervision. As an example, before, post-release supervision was required, once we sentenced a person, we were finished with that case by and large. Recently, I was reviewing a number of my criminal cases where I was required to impose post-release supervision. And in those cases that I was reviewing, I found that I or another judge, based on how we divide that workload, had to engage in seven to 10 additional decision-making activities after sentencing, after the original sentencing, that are in, in addition to what we used to do, to deal with only PRS issues. So, and those include both administrative kinds of things, as well as in-court hearings. That additional time certainly takes away from the time that we have to do other work in cases needing our attention. Again, we have done our level best to stave off a request for additional staff and the added costs that that necessitates. We are truly at a point where we need more help. If you were to compare us to a law firm, we would, I think, equate to a firm with eight senior partners, and I would liken the referee to perhaps a junior partner. Each of us has a bailiff that fulfills roles that include receptionist, legal secretary, and paralegal combined. Our bailiffs do a myriad of things, they too are stretched to their limits with no end in sight. Most law firms would also have additional paralegals, associate attorneys, and additional staff attorneys or law clerks that we don't have. We're simply asking for one additional staff attorney to help us with the load, a load that we have no control over, but what we know is, it keeps getting bigger. Those are a few brief comments that I have that support our request. As I indicated, we've tried very, very, very hard to delay these requests for additional staff for a long time. We are sensitive to the budget restraints that you have. And we just feel that we can't continue to delay these requests and get the work of the court done timely and at the highest level. We think, obviously, those who access our courts deserve that, and so that is the framework within which we ask for these requests. Jared makes a good point, there is likely a retirement that might come on the court. That will mean that we will have, for whatever period of time, seven judges working, doing the work of eight until a replacement. And that just carries that burden even deeper into the deficit category. So, I'm willing to entertain any questions that you may have, I'm sort of just giving you a little synopsis here. And I certainly want to tell you how much we appreciate your time.
Are there any questions for Jared or Judge Nelson?
So, Jared, let's, let's address a couple of other items that you've got. Talk to me about your, your tech fund request of about $7,300, $7,400. Talk to me about your your tech fund request of about seventy three, seventy four hundred dollars.
And that is a little bit more than we requested last year. A lot of the reason for that is kind of as we're realizing that this is probably not going anywhere anytime soon is shifting to laptops and docking stations instead of mini microcomputers for bailiffs. So what we're requesting is to do an initial, I think it was three, no, four this year, and then kind of do it over a two year period. What we would do is with the newer machines that we've recently given to the bailiffs is just like the judge said, is kind of that hand me down mentality. And those would move over to court reporters who hasn't, most of them are still on machines that are coming up on a decade old. So but because, you know, because they're state employees. You know, we do provide them that for email because we ask them to use the county email, but they certainly get the leftovers. So that that's where most of that is. Then there, you know, there is a subscription to, you know, the Office three sixty five, but the way that IS has been talking, I know that that's all kind of being reconfigured. So that's kind of where that's at.
Right. Okay, and then Jared, talk to me about the remaining amount of of what we need to do in your courtrooms that you've got for future upgrades.
And we've got probably about fifty thousand dollars left, which would be to replace the speakers in the courtrooms. Quite frankly, I I I think we could probably wait another year or two on those. We haven't seen those actually fail. We know that they're going to start. But that was more of a preventative thing, and given budget constraints, I think we could certainly wait a couple of years.
Okay. Jared, last thing for me is I'm just wanting to make sure that I talk to each of the departments as we keep moving closer to the HR payroll implementation. You know, training is starting this month of June, but that training for employees will will happen from here until October. As we as we bring out different modules, there will be training for employees as we keep moving. So I kind of just want to make sure that you that you kind of understand that over these next four or five months, we will really need to get training out to everybody from you to every other employee that you've got out there so that come October one, we're ready to roll.
Yeah, and we we've only got four of us that actually accrue time. So I think we'll be one of the easier departments to train, so just because of the nature.
And and that's probably a good place to be at this point in time, Jared. Other than that, I I don't have anything else for for district court unless the the county board does.
Yes, I I do have a question for Judge Nelson. You you mentioned the impact that the legislature has been having on the number of times you're involved with folks. And that's that's a concern for us as well. Have you been making folks who have some some ability to make changes in that, have you been spreading the word on that, Jody? Making them aware of how it's impacting you all?
The the answer to that is carefully. You have to understand that as judges, we cannot be involved in policymaking decisions or suggesting whether legislation is good or bad, should happen or not, or any of those things. Having said that, I know that the administrative office of the courts tracks that data and has been tracking that data and continues to track that data. Probably not at the micro level that I just talked to you about in terms of how many touches because they don't have the ability to see that. But they know what the volume of that is in terms of since probation, for example, has the task of supervising PRS cases, dealing with people who are nonconformist or who are not following through with it and what that requires in terms of administrative sanctions, coming back to the court and asking for imposition of administrative sanctions as well as revocations of PRS, which is what all those other touches are related to. That data is generally kept by the administrative office of the courts, and I know has been shared with many people in the legislature. Good, great, great question, but you'll you'll always know that we we have to be very careful in terms of how we we can't really go and reach out like that.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Any other questions for Judge Nelson or Jared Gavin?
All right.
Thank you all.
I'll take that as our cue. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you all very, very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, Sue, you ready to go? I I hate to say this, Sue, but unmute yourself.
Dennis.
There you go.
All right, welcome.
That's the first time you've ever asked me to say something, Dennis.
It 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 makes me nervous, but here we go.
Okay.
Okay, so so today we're going to talk Sue's two different funds that she's got. Fund twelve, which is the workers' comp fund, and then Fund thirteen, which is really all our other self insurance in there. So Sue, let's let's hop into, let's talk workers' comp first.
Okay.
And let's just talk current year numbers because, you know, in all reality, I'm kind of interested on in why, I mean, we've actually somewhat had a good year for workers' comp.
We have had, and the main difference, in my opinion, has been that more departments have gotten on board with the temporary modified duty. So we are bringing people back in temporary positions, which cuts down our indemnity costs. And also miraculously, some of them heal quicker so they can get back to their full duty.
Okay, yeah, because you know, because this this was kind of the first year for for quite a while, we haven't had to transfer everything that we had budgeted over.
Correct. And you know, Dennis, also, we haven't had we've had some frequency in claim, some severity, but the severity has not been like in years past. So that has totally helped on the medical costs.
Okay, so Sue, let's let's talk next year's budget.
Okay.
What what are your thoughts moving into next year?
Next year, I don't see that we're going to have much of a spike in either indemnity or medical costs. We may have more litigation costs. We are starting to see some COVID claims. We're starting to see some issues like that that are new to us as everything has happened with COVID. And they're probably going to be issues that we will not accept certain types of claims, and that could spark some litigation costs. So we're not, we're not anticipating a huge spike, but we are anticipating there may be some of that that we haven't seen in the years past.
Okay. So Sue, this is Fund twelve is also where your salary and benefits for you and Carrie come out of Fund twelve.
Correct.
Anything in your operating side that's driving anything?
I don't really see anything. Of course, our our copier, you know, after we got the new one and and everything went that way, we saw costs increase there, but I don't see anything that's going to impact the office budget greatly for the next year, possibly two years.
On the on the tech side, you guys are set up pretty decent.
We are.
As laptops and stuff like that.
Right, we did just get a laptop, and that's been working nicely. You know, like everybody, our our IT costs went up because there's a different way now that they are are charging back to departments. But yeah, we are set up, we're upgraded on our PCs. We did get cameras for them and the laptop, and everything's working really, really good. So we're we're up to speed on all of that.
Okay. Sue, I'll just, before we hop into Fund thirteen, you've probably heard this at least once from me, payroll system's coming. So, you know, really from here through October, you know, you and Carrie will be getting plenty of training as we move forward.
Right. We were a little nervous on some of the process and procedural, but I know as we go along, those questions will be answered. One of them, one of them was, since employees will now be entering their time, only carrier I can approve injury leave. So we were wondering how that worked on the front end. So on the back end, someone wasn't, you know, putting in injury leave hours, and then we had to come back and say, no, sorry, that was denied. You didn't have the medical proof that we needed. But but I think process and procedurally, as we move forward, that's going to work out just fine.
Okay, sounds good. Let's um, let's jump over to Fund thirteen.
Okay.
And so the the one thing that I'll just kind of remind everybody, when when you take a look, when I jump over to Fund thirteen, you will see that the two budget years tend to be a little bit higher than what the actual was a couple of years ago. And really what happens is when we set up this budget, we'll we'll set a cash reserve of about a million dollars aside. But other than that, we tend to budget the rest of it so that if something happens during the year that we've got to have the spending authority for, we're set up to take that on. Now, one of the examples in here is the county sheriff pursuit liability. We are now getting close to where we'll be at about nine hundred thousand dollars that we have set aside for that, which I budget for in case it happens. But Sue, I don't know how long has it been since we've had any activity in that sheriff pursuit side of things?
Well, we have one open claim right now where there was a pursuit and a young man was killed. So we do have an open claim right now. In a year's time, we have some pursuits that happen, but fortunately, the deputies are trained so well, and we know when to when to cut those pursuits off. So the the potential is there, the actuary is always a little nervous about that. But, you know, our exposure to that is two hundred and fifty thousand, and then the insurance carrier steps in on the excess. Theoretically, though, you know, if you have one incident where, say, two or three innocent parties would die as a result during a pursuit, you know, we are on on each of those. So.
Right, right. And in the last few years, and 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 from our standpoint, county board, what we do is we put aside fifty thousand bucks every year to keep building this this up so that when we do have those incidences happening, we've got the funding sitting there. So by by year end, we should be at just a little less than nine hundred thousand dollars. Me and Sue, we always kind of talk about, you know, where's the game plan on, what's the dollar amount that we'll shoot for? And then hold from there. And at this point in time, I don't think on the sheriff pursuit liability that we're that we're there yet. Sue, I don't know your thoughts on that.
No, we are not there yet. We're getting close, but we're just not there yet. I'd like to see that fund built up a little bit more just due to the exposure.
Right. Sue, talk to us about the other self insurance that we've got. Let's start with sheriff at fault.
Right, we do have the funding for the sheriff at fault. Occasionally, we have an incident where one of the deputies is on duty, and we have an auto accident where a car is damaged, a person is hurt. The injuries are few and far between. It's mostly property damage that we have on those. And we do not have liability coverage for those through our insurance carrier. So we are self insuring for that to take care of those vehicles that we damage in a in an accident. We had one, oh, several years ago where a vehicle was stopped at a stop sign. The deputy was behind the car, the car started out, and then it was visible, there was another car coming, so the deputy rear ended that car. It wasn't a serious accident by any means, but those are the types of instances we pay for out of that account. We also, Dennis, I was going to bring this up, this just happened this morning that we figured everything out. We had an excavator that was parked in the county and was vandalized. So I will be coming to you and talking to you about paying for those damages out of that inland marine self insured fund that we have. And it's going to be about seven thousand dollars out of that.
Okay, okay, so Sue, expand on what does inland marine really actually mean?
Inland marine is an old insurance term, and basically it means any portable equipment we have, any in car cameras, any of the the PCs that are in the sheriff's cruisers. And that fund pays for any damages that we would have to those types of items. The county years and years ago, I'd have to look it up, it's probably been a good seven, if not ten years ago, Deb might remember, we used to purchase insurance for that. And one year I talked to the board at renewal time, and we decided to begin to self insure for that. Premiums tend to be a little bit pricey compared to the losses that we have, so we just felt like self insuring made much more sense.
And and Sue, I think at this point in time, you know, we've got in that, I think we've got a balance of of a little over three hundred thousand dollars. So I I think I'm in agreement, you know, at this point in time, I think that was that that was the right call.
Right, right. And we don't tend to see multiple losses out of that. And also included in that fund, I should say, is the survey equipment that county engineer has. Some of those can be pricey little items to replace, but we have had really good loss experience out of that. Watch, now that I say that, I'll get a call this afternoon that seven pieces of equipment have been damaged.
Okay.
Okay, Dennis, mute. Mute Sue now that she's talking like that.
I, Rick, our Rick, our joke has been Kim Miller from Lincoln Public School, she's the risk manager. When the district office burned down, I said to Kim, remember what they teach us in risk manager school? What possibly could go wrong that would be a total loss?
There you go.
So with with the funding of this budget, everything that that is pushed over to to Fund thirteen to cover the revenue side has all been budgeted throughout the budgets that we talk about as we go through budget hearings. So there there is no special just transfer from the general fund. We push it out, each department budgets for it, and that's where where the funding comes from. So those are all built in to all the budget hearings that that we've been talking about. Sue, anything else on on Fund thirteen you want to talk about?
Um, I don't believe so. I have been in contact with Tom Shampoo because when we pushed out budget last year to With Tom Shampoo because when we pushed out budget last year to the departments. I told them on property to expect about a seven percent increase. I have a feeling with all the property claims that the insurers are going to start seeing due to the nationwide vandals and rioters. I have a feeling next year our property rates may go up into the double digits. We're hoping not, but that could very well be a reality.
Okay, I I mean. That that somewhat makes sense, okay. If not. Unless you guys have questions for Sue. I'm good.
I don't. Anyone else?
I will say, I will say on the P card, Carrie has done a fantastic job. Getting as many people to accept that as possible. Boy, we wish Brian Medical Center would because we pay whopping bills to them. That would be wonderful to be able to pay it with P card, but so far. There it's a no go with them, so.
Dennis. What's what's up next in the budget process? How many? I know we have some big departments yet to hear from. What's the schedule moving forward?
So Thursday, we've got sheriff and and county attorney. And then. Next week will be our last week, so we will. Do. Clerk of the District Court, public defender, and property management on Tuesday, and then Thursday we will do. Crisis Center Election Commissioner. And then Jeff Maul will come over and talk about visitor promotion stuff.
Okay.
So.
And Dennis, were you going to have the, were you going to have some of the people with who do the, who asked for the fifteen cents to come in and discuss? Or the inter locals, you were going to have some of the inter local folks come in too, right?
Yeah, after we after we get through there or through this and. The the mayor gets her budget out there, then I'll schedule the inter local department to to come in and talk about their stuff.
Okay, good.
But that's kind of, that's kind of where where we're kind of at. Hopefully, by the end of June, you know, we we've kind of gotten through all that stuff.
So then July, the decision making will start, right?
Yes. Yes. Once we get through all these, I'll I'll throw all the numbers kind of together. I'll get that stuff out to you, then we can start talking. Okay, if if you don't have anything else, that's. That should take care of me today.
I I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll.
Deb? Deb?
Oh, yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Roma?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Very good. Thank you all.
See you Thursday.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and end the Zoom for you. Just remember Bo will be handling the the meeting on Thursday. I will be out of town, so.
What?
Hopefully on vacation.
It's a vacation day, Rick. It's been scheduled for a while, though.
Well, I'm proud of you.
Yeah.
Well deserved.
Well, it's a use it or lose it at this point, so. All right, have a good one, gang.